I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let our record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is now six o'clock. Please join me, we're going to stand. Mr. Husbands is going to lead us in the invocation.
You bow your head to me as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for our ability to be involved in the useful work, for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities for this school district. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our district, and in particular, for this assembled board. And I'm asking that you would graciously grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our students, a keen thirst for justice, rightness, and kindness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who learn, teach, and live in and around our district. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. We actually have the presentation of colors tonight from Canyon Creek High School. Mr. Moore will lead us in the pledge afterwards. But here we have left rifle cadet chief petty officer Alvozo, right rifle cadet chief petty officer Wolf, American flag cadet chief petty officer Rodriguez, Texas flag cadet Ensign Rodriguez, and their instructor is Lieutenant Commander Cortez.
Left base. Present colors. Please join me in the pledge, the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
And now the Texas flag.
On honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Read colors. Ready, cut, right, face, forward march.
You may be seated. Item 2A on our agenda, special district recognition, CISD National Merit Scholarship Student Recognitions. Dr. Stockton.
We are excited tonight to have so many students to recognize. I'm going to start off with asking Mr. Kager to come up to introduce our first recipients.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. It's my honor this evening to recognize the fine group of young men and women and celebrate their significant academic accomplishments. Tonight, we are celebrating seniors who have been recognized for their performance on the PSAT that was taken in October of their junior year. Before we introduce our honorees, I'd like to thank those who have helped them reach this point. We would like to thank our high school campus administrators and staff. If we could please have you stand at this time, I know we've got some principals here. By offering a rigorous and varied curriculum, our campuses do an outstanding job of preparing our students to be successful. Thank you to our great teachers and administrators for their fine work. While we are extremely proud of the efforts of our campuses, we understand that the journey of these high-achieving students starts at home. Will parents, grandparents, and guardians of these students please stand to be honored The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarship that began in 1955. Of the approximately 1.5 million entrants into the competition each year, about 16,000 students are notified that they have qualified as a national merit semifinalist. These national merit semifinalists represent the top 1 percent of scores in their respective states. It should be noted that the state of Texas has the eighth-highest qualifying score in the nation, making this accomplishment for these young men and women even more impressive. It is my pleasure to introduce Denise Zupola, at this time, our Coordinator of Guidance and Counseling, to announce the names of our national merit semifinalist. Denise.
Victoria Cutrell. Jacob Davis. Christopher Hatch. Eric I'mhoff. Isabella Lee. Evan Lee. Jonathan Lowe. Samuel Packer. Connor Powers. Vishnu Sagit. Indiana San Nicer.
Very quickly, on behalf of the board, you're in the top 1 percent. That's the elite of the elite. I don't think it gets much better than that. I just want to say on behalf of the board, congratulations to each and every one of you. You are fine students, and we are very proud of you being a part of Conroe ISD. Congratulations.
Follow Maurice.
There you go. Good job.
Congratulations. 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 I'd like to vote. Congratulations again. Congratulations. 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 I like that, Agent Sir. Keep going. Congratulations again. Congratulations again. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to you. Good luck to you guys. Good luck to you. Good luck to you. Best of luck to you. Best of luck to you. Best of luck to you. Good to be here.
the Woodlands High Cross Country Team.
We have found over the years, it's much easier to leave this item on the agenda than to add it. So with that, I want to introduce Mr. Colson, Principal of the Woodlands High School.
Dr. Stockton, Mrs. Bush, members of the board, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here to recognize a very special group of young men and their coaches. Like Dr. Stockton mentioned, we've been here a couple times for cross-country before. Coach Green is in his ninth year as the head cross-country coach, and he's been here five times, which gives him a better winning percentage than his father, who was 50 percent. Coach Green is now a little bit over 50 percent. Not that there's any family competition going on. So, you know, these guys work very, very hard all year long. There is no offseason in distance running, and they are here very early in the morning and do it again in the afternoon, and are a very dedicated group of young men. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our head cross-country coach, Juris Green.
Well, thank you all for having us, Mr. Stockton and members of the board. This doesn't get old. Every year, I know I say that. I don't know if you remember what I say from year to year, season to season, but it never does. And maybe one of the reasons is I get to wear a suit. You know why I'm in sweats and not very nice out, but I get to dress up in my Sunday best every once in a while. But I want to thank you for having us, and, you know, it's fair to say, this program over 40 years, 40-plus years, has had its fair share of success. And I think some of the times, it gets glanced over. Oh, they won again. They've done it again. They've done this or that. Mr. Colson made a good point. After the state meet, we had just done all the calculations, and the unofficial results came out that we were officially the winners, and made a point that, you know, it's one thing to get to the top, but it's a very different feeling to repeat as a state champion. And it's even, there's a different set of challenges to three-peat. And in fact, after, as well, in a private meeting that the team and I had on the bus afterwards, once the awards are over, I made a point to them that, you know, putting on one of our jerseys, yes, they're very lightweight, and they're top-of-the-line material, but putting that jersey on oftentimes feels like an anchor around your neck with what the program asks of these volunteers. You know, they're not conscripted. They chose to run for this program, but a program that regularly asks more of what they even expect of themselves shouldn't go unnoted. We had an atypical year this year, starting in the summer with the loss of one of our teammates and one of my boys, and then the hurricane. I think many people would have said it was okay for us not to have accomplished what we did this season, and yet here we are. And, you know, I've tipped my hat many times to these guys for what they've carried, not only what it says on their chest when they race, but the other things as well. And I said in a newspaper article, our interview after the state meet, you know, we got our bus to go to Round Rock, and it was an elementary school bus from Ford Elementary. You know, those buses are color-coded. And the color on the front of the bus was Tanner Noble's favorite color, teal. It was here, and you can't tell me that's a coincidence, or just a coincidence. And I knew something special was going to happen. I didn't know when, and in fact, you know, as the race was unfolding with 600 meters left, Gavin is battling, and he's in fourth place, and trying to move up, and I'm screaming that he can win, he can win. He's three or four seconds behind a leader at that time. There's a small footbridge about 400 meters from the finish, and with parent video and website video afterwards, we calculated that we were six points behind South Lake Carroll with basically 60 seconds left to run over 5,000 meters. And within that 60 seconds, our top-five scorer has passed exactly 30 people and not only made up the six points, but put six points on South Lake Carroll for us to secure our 20th state title in our program's history. Saying that, I'd like to introduce these seven members. Our state runner-up, second-place finisher Gavin Hoffpar. Senior Daniel Baker. Senior Ryan Rafer. Senior Ethan Mercado. Senior Austin Childery. Senior Matt Jones. And our young one, our sophomore, Ethan Hammer.
On behalf of the board, I'm actually very honored to get to present to you boys and Coach Green this plaque. When Ms. Bush asked me to do this, I've been thinking about it all day, how honored I was to actually get to do this for you guys, because I know how hard it is to be a student athlete, especially today with such a wonderful school and principal that's demanding the absolute best out of you guys academically. And you're doing that in the classroom, and you're also doing it out on the field as well. And I was thinking of just some things that I could say, but actually, I was hoping that you guys were getting some great leadership, and there's really nothing else I could add. Coach Green, what a wonderful example you are of a leader for these boys in this program, expecting much more out of them than just winning these championships, but for them to be well-rounded individuals that can achieve their goals. So I appreciate that. The tradition that you have set and carried on through your entire family. When my wife and I first moved here, we were talking about things that we would get our future kids involved with, and someone told us at that point, you really need to get involved in the cross-country program because they have a great tradition and they demand the most out of their kids. So I got an 11-year-old that's going to be coming your way at some point. But on behalf of the school board, we would like to present you guys your 6A state championship plaque and congratulate each one of you, so thank you for what you've done.
Miss Godfrey, has anyone registered to address the board? The next 30 minutes have been designated for public participation by patrons who have signed up to address the board in accordance with Board Policy BED. Please remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. The board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. These policies provide that if a resolution cannot be reached administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of the district's complaint policies can be found on the district's website. Those who have registered to address the board will be limited to five minutes for their presentation. Delegations of more than five must appoint one representative to present their views to the board. Miss Godfrey, please call the first person who has signed up to address the board.
Sherry Shorten.
What you have before you is a packet of information that was provided to Commissioners Court this morning. It has come to my attention that the Conroe ISD Board has the 1,700 votes to allocate to the Montgomery Central Appraisal District candidates. And as a result, I am adamantly asking the Conroe ISD Board not to allocate any votes to Mr. Eric Yalick. This packet here has been provided with a lot of information with supporting documents that justify my request. I am, you know, again, this was read this morning, and the 1,700 votes, obviously, you have the votes to make two more position appointments from the list of 13 candidates. And the information provided shows that Mr. Yalick's ethics, morality, and his intent to bring reform are very much so in question. In reality, you know, Mr. Yalick's policies tend to try to find solutions by creating discord. And as a school district, you are very much aware that teamwork isn't about the only thing that gets things done. There are many, many players in the process, and many, many things that need to happen. Being aware that the policies and procedures are set at the state level for property tax, the appraisal district board members have to enforce the state laws rather than try to find loopholes in the state laws and rather than try to circumvent those state laws. It would be much better to have someone on the board who is dedicated to enforcing the law and publicly going to the state and talking to our representatives to get the things that are wrong changed in the system. And I appreciate your time. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, you know, when you have time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shorten.
All right. Item 3 is a consent agenda. I've had requests to remove items E and F, so I need a motion to approve if there's no others that want to remove anything else.
Motion to approve with the said amendments removed, I'm sorry, said agenda items removed.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. Item E, consider purchase of approximately 1.744 acre tract adjacent to Austin Elementary. Mr. Husbands.
Yes, I simply ask to have this removed because I think the purchase of land on behalf of the district is an item that needs to be openly aired, and the reason for it and such. So I just have a couple of questions. It is my understanding this 1.7 odd acres is purchased for the additional retention or detention, I'm not sure I'm using the right word, so either one or both, for the Austin renovation, and that it was cheaper to purchase the 1.7 acres at appraised value than it was to put the retention underground, such as we did it Travis years ago. Would that be an accurate statement?
This statement is accurate. We spent a great deal of effort analyzing at least six different detention options before we even looked to go outside our school's footprint that we currently own. So we found this option is one of three options we looked at off-site, and it is the least expensive land option. It is also the best engineering option to suit our needs.
Very good. That's all the questions I have. I move the approval of item E.
Second.
All right. Any further questions?
I have none.
All right. All those in favor? Motion passes. Item F, consider approval of 2017-18 request for class size waiver. Mr. Husbands.
I guess it's just my night to extend the board meeting time, but I apologize. But this one, I just wanted to make sure that I was, again, that I was informed here. You know, a lot of districts ask for waivers, and they ask for a lot of waivers, to keep from having to hire the appropriate number of teachers. I think in this case, though, there's an exception, as Conroe is an exceptional district. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, there's approximately 30 classrooms in the entire district, K through 4, that have, I think all but two of them have one more student than the 22 to 1, and a couple of them have one or two more.
Correct. We have 27 classrooms that have one additional student, one classroom with two, and one classroom with three. What we've always done is we've asked for flexibility, because we go and rely on the campus to make that decision to add another teacher, because sometimes with one extra student, they don't want to split a class. Sometimes campuses will ask for a paraprofessional position to add to the class, and then sometimes our enrollment changes. So we may bump over on one day, and then a week later, we may come down. So we provide that flexibility. We've hired approximately 16 teachers since the year started to address growth, and we'll continue to monitor that with your permission.
So these campuses have chosen, these 29 classrooms, I guess it is, that have chosen to either address it with paras or keep it the same, or one extra student, or whatever it may be, not because we forced it on them as a budgetary item or anything like that?
No, or continue to monitor it for a later date.
And I know school populations are an ebb-and-flow thing. So anyway, that's the only question I have, ma'am, and I move the approval there as well.
All right.
Welcome.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 4A, consider approval of 2017-2018 district improvement plan.
With that, I'll ask Dr. Null to come and present those two items.
Didn't know I had my own sound effect.
It sounded like an amber alert.
President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, here tonight to present to you and seek your approval of our district improvement plan. The district improvement plan is a very comprehensive document. I know you've had an opportunity to look at it over the last few weeks, but I would remind you that the district improvement plan, as well as the campus improvement plans, they are living documents. So they are documents that we don't just produce and put on a shelf, but we revisit those throughout the year, and they may change throughout the year as our-
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item four A, consider approval of 2017-2018 district improvement plan. Dr. Stockton.
With that, I'll ask Dr. Knoll to come and present those two items.
Didn't know I had my own sound effect.
It sounded like an amber alert.
President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. I'm here tonight to present to you and seek your approval of our district improvement plan. The district improvement plan is a very comprehensive document. I know you've had an opportunity to look at it over the last few weeks, but it, I would remind you that the district improvement plan, as well as the campus improvement plans, they are living documents. So they are documents that we don't just produce and put on a shelf, but we revisit those throughout the year, and they may change throughout the year as our strategies change. But our district improvement plan, it highlights the academic and operational strategic goals for the district, and not only outlines the goals, but it outlines our strategies to achieve those goals, and then explicitly states how we will measure to find out if we were successful or not with our goals. It is a very collaborative effort, you know, all departments in the district work together to produce the document, and then we present this document to the district-level planning and decision-making committee. And when we do those presentations, rather than just come one night and present this entire document and all the goals, we break it down so that month by month, they hear one or two goals, and they hear directly from the department that is responsible for that. So for example, when it's, when they're going to hear the goal about technology, we bring the technology department in for them to share with them that goal and how it will be achieved. And we think that's very effective so that we don't bombard them with all the information in one night. So our district-level committee has had a chance to hear all of our goals, and they have approved our district improvement plan. And tonight, I'm here to answer any questions you may have and then seek your approval of our district improvement plan.
I move the nomination or approval.
A second.
All right. Questions, discussion? None? All right. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Knoll. Item four B, consider approval of the 2017-2018 campus improvement plans. Dr. Stockton.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Kager and Dr. Phillips to come present the campus improvement plans.
Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. Dr. Phillips and I are here tonight to ask for your approval of the 2017-2018 campus improvement plans. As you know, the campus plans are unique to each campus and done in conjunction with the principal and the site-based decision-making committee at each campus. All of the CIPs align with the district plan outlined by Dr. Knoll and follow a common template that ensures the consistency of process and product that are part of the areas identified for inclusion in the campus improvement plans. Each campus, in their commitment to continuous improvement, works to identify areas of focus within the plan and writes goals and objectives to support the achievement of every student, overall success of each campus and of our district. The campus improvement plan, as Dr. Knoll mentioned, is a living document which is monitored and adjusted throughout the year by the campus improvement committee. In developing the campus improvement plan, each campus must also submit an itemized budget outlining how state compensatory education funds, title funds, other state federal funds, and high school allotment funds support the plan. We are here to welcome your questions, take any comments, and seek your approval for the campus improvement plans.
Motion to approve the plan as presented.
Mr. Moore, second. Any discussion, questions? All right. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kager and Dr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Item five A, receive the 2018-2019 school calendar information. Dr. Stockton.
Okay. It's that time of year we're working on our school calendar. I'll ask Mr. or Dr. Knoll to come present that information.
Good evening once again. It is that time of year where we begin the process of working on our school calendar, and I'll just share with you a brief overview of our timeline of the calendar process. And this is a tentative timeline. It's one that can be flexible if, as we move forward, if we feel in need of a slowdown, we can do that. But when it's possible, we try to bring this information to our community, really as soon as it's appropriate to do so. It starts back really in October. We begin to work on the few draft calendars that we may share with the district-level planning and decision-making committee. And at last month's meeting of that committee, we shared with them just some big parameters of the process and tried to prepare them for the process so that they were ready to begin to make decisions. And we come to you tonight to seek your input, your guidance, that we would go back and share with them tomorrow when they meet, because when they meet tomorrow, we will do our best to produce draft calendars that will be ready to be presented to the public. We've had years where we've presented one draft calendar to put out for comment. We've had years that we've had up to three. But that will be placed on our website to go out for comment. Last year, we had over 2,000 comments come in through our website. So it's a very effective mechanism to receive public input on our calendars. So our goal will be to, by the end of this month, to have those calendars put up, and that will run through the beginning of January, and then our committee will meet in January 10th. And at that time, their goal will be to select a calendar that we will then present to you at the January board meeting for approval. And want to share with you just a few of the highlights of the calendar and some things that we've already seen and noted as we've worked through the early drafts. We will have 177 days of instruction. This was a number that you approved earlier this year when you approved a waiver for additional staff development day. We'll have four early release days. Once again, that's based on a waiver that you've approved. Those four early release days will be at the end of each of our nine-week grading periods. 187 days for teachers, and a significant number for us next year is 75,600. That's the number of instructional minutes that are required now by the state of Texas. It's no longer about number of days, it's about number of minutes, and that magic number is 75,600. We also build into our calendar historically extra minutes so that if we had to miss day, two days because of inclement weather, our students would not have to make those days up. So that's a change that's happened in our calendar over the last few years. You no longer see student makeup days included on our calendar, and that's because we've built in the extra minutes in the calendar. Moving forward, we consider start date. The traditional start date for next year would be August 27th. And as you'll remember, because we are a district of innovation, we have an option to start school earlier as we did this year. That day for next year, if we followed the same template that we did this year, would be August the 15th. I would tell you that most of the early feedback that we've received, not only from the district level committee but from campuses as we've traveled around, that was a pretty popular decision, and the midweek start was very popular as well. We had an October holiday this year that was also well-received by parents and students alike and teachers. Thanksgiving break, historically, in our most recent history, we've taken a week off at Thanksgiving. We always make note of the first semester end date, and looking at our different options of the calendar, depending on when we may end, once again, the calendar is really a balanced mathematical equation, okay? You take a day off somewhere, you add it somewhere else. It's just the way that it works. And so of a few of the draft calendars we've produced, we would anticipate the first semester ending somewhere between December 19th and December 21st, depending upon which way we may go, with students returning back, teachers returning back on January 7th and students returning back on January 8th. It's very similar to where we are this year. One of the challenges with this calendar is just the way the calendar falls. And I would tell you, looking ahead at the 1920 calendar, we get a little more back to normal where school could come back that first week of January. The challenge here that we face is if teachers came back on the second, and students came back on Thursday, the third, campuses are very concerned that attendance would be very poor for Thursday and Friday-only classes. So that's something that we've really had to take into account. Spring break, there are really two options for spring break, the 11th to the 15th, which Houston ISD has already approved their calendar, and that's the spring break week they chose. The only university that we've seen so far has been the University of Texas, and they chose the next week, 18th to the 22nd.
That's obviously the right one.
And there goes our longhorn.
Right. So that might be one that we would still want to wait and see more things come out. Either of those spring breaks, I would tell you, would work well with our academic calendar as far as ending a nine weeks right before the spring break. Either would work, so we kind of have that flexibility. And then looking at end date, once again, depending upon how we choose to take certain days off, I see a potential for us to possibly end school on May 24th for students, which would be before Memorial Day, or if we had a few more days off along the way, still having the ability to end school on May 30th and having teachers and students out still by the end of May. So those options exist. And so I'll really, if you have any feedback or questions that you'd have me share with them tomorrow as they begin to work through it, I would welcome those.
Let's go down the line.
Yeah, the only feedback I've heard, I know, last year, there was some trepidation with the earlier start date, and we got a lot of comments on that. But once we put it out there and people lived into it, I've heard a lot of positive comments that people, they like that, and they like the semester break before Christmas, and they like ending as early as possible, so.
Yes, sir.
We all do, right?
Yes.
If you started on the 15th, again, Wednesday in the middle of August, okay?
Yes, sir.
What days off would keep you from ending school on the 24th?
To...
You understand what I'm asking?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So to end school, to end school on the 24th, we would need to go to school on December 21st. That'd be a half day. You know, that's one day later than we're going this year, but it's, that is a half day. Other than that, we would follow really the calendar that we have this year.
The full week of Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir. We'd have still the full week of Thanksgiving, still have...
You lose October, don't you?
No, sir. We would have October, we would have April 19th, and we could still get to May 24th.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And so the, you know, a tentative alternative that was created was just if we felt like getting out for winter break on the 21st was too late, we wanted to get out on the 19th instead, and perhaps take the Monday after Good Friday off, that would push us back to May 31st. So it's just a, the more common, if we followed really this year's calendar and just went to school on December 21st, we could get, achieve May 24th. Now, May 24th would be the last day for students, that'd be a Friday, which would mean teachers would work May 25th, which would be the Saturday of the holiday weekend. Now, principals are flexible, and they could work that out with folks that may have a conflict, but that's just a, that is a reality of, that's as far as we can push it.
Could we not make that on the Tuesday, the 28th, instead?
We could, but I think a majority of folks would, we could have that conversation, certainly. I think a majority of folks would rather come and be done and leave for the weekend and are finished.
On a holiday weekend?
And are finished.
And never come back.
And never come back, okay.
We used to have, traditionally...
Well, we want them to come back in August.
We've had three graduations before that day, on a Saturday, so all the high schools were working, and I think we could be flexible if that was the calendar that...
So what are the days in December and January this year? Pardon me for not knowing, but I don't have...
This year, we get out the 20th.
20th on a Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
And you go back when?
9th.
And next year, like I said, the calendar does turn a little more in favor of squeezing that, but we're sort of in no man's land.
Yeah.
And the other feedback that we've gotten very strong over the years is having three weekends for the winter break.
Yeah, Dr. Knoll and I have gone round and round about this, but that's just the nature of my business and not anything else. The feedback that I've received has been very positive about the early start. I think last year, it caught a lot of people off guard because they planned their vacations prior to us setting the calendar, and that was an educational opportunity for us to inform them that they really shouldn't plan on when we would start until February when the calendar is set. And so I've had people even reach out to me now saying, are we looking at a potential early start against next year? And I'm like, yes, but until February, I can't tell you for sure what we're going to be doing. So that's been very positive. And then the other thing I keep hearing constantly is if we can get out before Memorial Day, the parents really would like that, so I love this.
Thank you.
I'll defer to you guys. Whatever you put on the calendar, that's what I was in mind.
We can't go to it all year long.
That's my preference.
A couple of days early.
Mr. Sanders, Mr. Hubert.
No issues.
My question is if, on the May 24th, the last day of school in May 2019?
Yes, sir.
If we do that, when would the graduations be? Are they typically before that, I understand?
Yes.
Would we still be able to get the graduations out before the holidays?
So we are at the, you know, for four of our schools, we are at the mercy of the Pavilion. I would tell you, kind of started working on these drafts, I started doing these in September, and once I saw that that was a possibility, like it looked like it could happen, I went ahead and made contact with the Pavilion just to give them the heads-up that this might be real, we might be able to make that happen. And so they have penciled us in for that week before. Now, nothing's confirmed yet, and so we, once you approve the calendar, if that's the end date we choose, I'll go back to them with the firm date. But our goal would be to graduate that, you know, probably that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week for the Pavilion, and then we would work out Candy Creek and Hawk, you know, on the front end or the back end, whichever fits more appropriately for them.
Okay, very good. Same way. I mean, it's, I have very positive feedback on that as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Knoll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five B, select commissioning agents for building commissioning and building envelope commissioning services and delegate authority to superintendent. Dr. Stockton.
Easy Foster, please.
So President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, it's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval a selection of a pool of commissioning agents that are, we're intending to use for the services of commissioning our mechanical systems and our building envelope systems. We bring this to you for your approval because of some recent code adoptions in the Energy Code in our state and our local municipality that now require third-party commissioning agents to be used for building envelope and building mechanical systems. So we published an RFQ. We had seven firms respond to the RFQ. After grading that with our committee against our criteria, we're selecting a pool of three of those seven to have at our use to finish out our 2015 bond project. This time, that pool is the DLR Group, Bryson Gardner Consultants, and Envy Engineering. At this point, we're asking you to approve this selection.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All right. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Select construction manager at risk for 2019 lifecycle. Mr. Foster.
At this time, I bring forward for your approval the selection of a construction manager at risk for our 2019 lifecycle project, which covers MEP systems, athletics, lifecycle items, and building envelope lifetime items, which are roofs and joint ceilings and things like, windows and things of that nature. In November of 2015, we selected PBK as our architect for our 2019 lifecycle project, and PBK has helped us by publishing an RFQ for construction managers at risk. We had two companies respond to our RFQ. Based on our criteria, we selected both of them to participate in step two of our two-step selection process, which we received pricing from, and then interviewed both contractors. Contractors selected as the best offer, well, GTT Construction was selected as the best offer who submitted a proposal we deemed to be the best value for the district. At this time, we've got the rankings and that evaluation as part of this item, and we're requesting your approval of this selection.
No move.
All right. Questions, comments?
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
How big is that, you know, I know it hasn't been bid, but how big is that package? Is it general, 15 million?
No, for 2019, we've advertised 6.2 million.
Oh, much smaller than...
Yeah, it'll be the waning part of our 2015 bond project.
Anything else? All those in favor? Motion passes. Item five D, consider approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for 2018 lifecycle project. Mr. Foster.
At this time, I request your approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for our 2018 lifecycle project. Again, this covers our MEP systems, our athletics lifecycle, and our building envelope lifecycle. In November of 2016, we selected GTT as the construction manager at risk for our 2018 lifecycle project. Since then, we've designed plans, we've advertised, take bids from the marketplace, and GTT has prepared a proposal for their work. We've negotiated a guaranteed maximum price of $12,793,063 for the 2018 lifecycle work. At this time, we're requesting your approval of the GMP amount.
No move. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Capital improvement update. Mr. Foster, short time.
At this time, I'd like to bring you up to speed on our capital improvements that we have underway throughout the district, starting with our safety and security project, which we are nearing the end of Phase Two. So I represented a picture of the entry vest to build at one of our campuses. We are still above the ceilings, but we're at a point where we're making systems talk to each other so we can see all the new camera views, make sure all the new access control systems are working so that we can release them to the campuses for their full use in the very near future. The project is scheduled to go through the end of December, and it is on schedule and proceeding as we would anticipate it to.
Is this a camera view, or is this just a picture?
This is just a picture.
Okay, well, if it's that, if it's that, well, clear, that's a pretty awesome system.
The cameras that we are installing are of very good quality, so we can get good image representation from them, so. Now, we are currently working through the process of collecting data on more campuses so we can bring you Phase Three in the spring for your approval of that GMP. Moving on to Grand Oaks High School. Grand Oaks High School is on schedule, is scheduled to open in August of 2018, which is approximately... is approximately 39 weeks away. So as you can see here, the overall progress of the site is moving along very well. The roofing system is going in its final form. The athletics venues, which you can see clearly, are taking their shape as the grass is going in on the practice fields and the turf is going in on the other athletic venues in that site. Interior of the building, the finishes are beginning to come together. We're finishing the academic, which is the front three-story part of the building first, and moving towards the athletics and the fine arts and CT areas in the back. So we're starting to see some of the finishes and some of the colors and other things inside that building come alive. As I said, it is on schedule, scheduled to open in August.
Mr. Foster, on that, are you and Principal Povich hoping that the calendar will be moved back?
Are you on track for an August 15th start potentially?
It's got to be turned over a lot sooner than that.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to report for when we're, the contract with the contractor is scheduled to finish that building in June.
Good.
So that we have June and July and part of August, either some of or all of, to move our furniture and get it set up for the students. So we did prepare this one adequately for some flexibility for our calendar process.
We actually had this conversation before the calendar was approved. It was just a double check.
We'll let the board know if we need anybody to move furniture that last night.
Well, we'll be looking for people with trucks and dollys.
There you go.
You've got a truck.
You'll have a truck, I know.
All right, we're going to move on to Clark Intermediate, which is also on schedule. It is scheduled to open in August, right alongside of Grand Oaks High School. So you can see from this picture, the building structure at the front door is coming around, coming together, and the interior of that building is also coming together. What you can see as we move around that building is the building systems on what we call the tough end of the building, where the kitchen equipment and the main electrical service, things of that nature, that is proceeding very rapidly. So you will see pictures begin to parallel Grand Oaks High School as we move forward. Both of them are on the same schedule for finish and turnover so that we can have adequate time with our staff and our purchasing department can furnish it outfitted, our technology department can set up the desk tables and chairs and computer workstations so that they can function for the start of school, whenever it happens to be in August of 2018.
Better than average weather, awesome general contractor, subs, what, why?
Well, we go through a very detailed process to make sure we get the best contractors we could possibly get.
But why are you ahead of even on schedule?
Well, we're, I would not argue that we're ahead of schedule, we're right where we would need to be at this point in the year to turn it over in at the end of May.
I just miss her, what you said.
And if I misspoke, I sincerely apologize. But if you ask the contractor, he's got his head down, his elbows up, and he's behind schedule, so he's working hard. Now, moving over to Conroe High School, where we're doing an addition renovation project, which will allow us to do a major mechanical overhaul of the main campus. You're looking at the building structure for the central plant, which is the heartbeat of the mechanical system that's being upgraded on that campus. Over the next month or so, you'll see those two big supports in the back of that picture house the cooling towers, which are the, you know, kind of the heartbeat of keeping our chillers in operation. The pads you're looking at are pump pads and chiller pads for all that mechanical equipment that will be delivered in the not-too-distant future.
Have they been covered in the past? Or is that a new technique?
Well, it depends on the system. So most of the systems at Conroe High School currently are air-cooled systems, which are out in the elements. We are upgrading that system for a better, more efficient water-cooled system. So the cooling towers are out in the elements, but the chillers themselves are inside a contained apartment. It does, absolutely. And it also, it also, I mean, this, the water-cooled systems are leaps and bounds more efficient than air-cooled systems. And putting it in a central plant allows us to expand it as that campus grows over time, without ending up with the systems like we have at Conroe High School currently, where there's chillers behind every building all over the place. They'll all be centrally located, and we can pipe to everything else from here moving forward.
Thanks.
Please, please.
Now, the building addition, which is the main component that allows us to work on the main portion of that building. This structure is going up now, so we're going to have classrooms here. It's more or less for the purposes of this construction, swing space to move students into as we renovate other portions of the building. I would like to report this project is on schedule, but we are scheduled to be on campus through December of 2019. And that's our update.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Item 6A, consider award of RFP 17-01-01A, contracted educational services.
Mr. Rice, if you'll present that item and the next two items.
Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. Tonight, I'm recommending the Board of Trustees award RFP 17-01-01A, contracted educational services, professional development, and education consulting services, November 2017, to the 24 vendors listed on the attached tabulation for an estimated annual expenditure of approximately $25,000. The district has requested proposals from 350 vendors for these services. Thus far, 160 vendors have been awarded since June of 2017. The $25,000 is included in the previously awarded annual estimate of $1.5 million. The recommended vendors submitted responses between October 1st and October 31st, 2017. Service contracts with awarded vendors will remain firm through November 30th, 2018, with an option to renew annually for four additional one-year terms through November 30th, 2022. And at this time, I recommend your approval.
I move they be approved as presented.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Rice. Consider and adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Conroe Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds. Mr. Rice?
Yes, tonight I'm recommending the Board of Trustees approve the order authorizing the issuance of Conroe Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing the superintendent and the chief financial officer to approve the amount, the interest rate, price, including the terms thereof, and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto. The parameter to order is for the sale of Conroe Independent School District School Bond Series 2018. The approximately new issue amount is $202 million from the 2015 bond referendum. The bond sale will provide funds for a new junior high school in the Conroe feeder zone, building a new elementary in the Oak Ridge feeder zone, renovations and additions to Conroe High School and Austin Elementary, safety and security projects, lifecycle replacement projects, and technology. At this time, I would like to just recognize a couple of folks that are with us this evening from Andrew Skirth, we have Tom Sage and Ben Morse. If they, if you have any legal questions, they're your guys for that. And then also, we have Mr. John Robuck, the district's financial advisor here, that's going to present our schedule of events.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you.
President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, good evening. Last time I was out here was August 15th, and I, we had a refunding to show you. I don't think we've actually presented to the board, but I think they've seen the results of it.
Yes.
I think I was showing you $10.5 million, but the other day, we actually ended up saving a little over $14.5 million.
Yes.
Congratulations, great news. We are here tonight to talk and ask for your approval on a parameter to issue the last of your remaining authorization from the November 2015 bond authorization. And this could be the third or, you know, potentially final sale of the authorization. I always like to start off by going through, right here, there we go, overview of the bond market. This is, again, the bond buyer index, is the average rate of municipal bonds across the country for general obligation debt. This chart was actually updated last week to get in time for your agenda packet. The rates actually has dropped, it's actually now at 3.49%. It dropped after the House released this tax reform bill. But then the Senate released their bill, and it went back up. So we don't know what this week's rate is, but we think it's going to be close to probably about 3.67 again. So we've kind of stayed in this relative range. It's, what's going to happen with the tax reform bill, we're not quite sure yet. Obviously, as you have casualty, property casualty companies change the way they do their taxes, you have corporations reduce their taxes, individuals reduce their tax, people are going to be looking for a little higher tax equivalent yield. So yields may go up if it passes in the current form, but again, the current form is still being discussed, so there's really no telling what's going to happen. With that being said, page two is the debt service for the proposed $202 million bond issue. Now, we're showing $190 million, 195,000 of bonds being issued because of premium. We ran this with current market scale to see how it looked in your tax rate model. But this will generate $202 million, this is at current rate, current market rates. So when it's all said and done, the total debt service requirements are there on the far right. We are here tonight asking for your approval for the parameter order. Parameter order is a not-to-exceed amount of the $202 million. The maximum maturity cannot exceed 30 years, and then the true interest cost of the bond shall not exceed 5%. We think if we sold the bonds today, we'd be closer to the 4% range, and actually probably less than that, probably closer to 3.85% with your credit, it'll probably be a little lower than that. But if you all approve this tonight, we will start working with the rating companies. Actually, we have rating schedules, rating calls scheduled on Friday. We already have a draft of the document ready to go, and then look to sell potentially the week of December 14th. If it's not a good time to sell, we'll, with the beauty of the parameter orders allows us the flexibility to push it back or move it forward, depending if we have ratings and everything in place. But again, you know, if it's week of the 11th, we'll do it then. If not, then we'll wait till January, do it in January. With that, I'll be happy to answer your questions. Again, interscrets here, they drafted the legal documents, we drafted, obviously, the numbers, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, we need to move to approve this. There's not an official, no.
I move, I move.
Yeah, I second that motion.
As requested.
I second that motion, Joe.
Any questions?
Great timing, great idea.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate you being here and your leadership, thank you.
All right, item 6C, receive financial reports. Mr. Rice?
All right, I'm here this evening to present the financial statements for the month of October. These financial statements will include our general fund, debt service, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. The first statement we'll look at this evening is our balance sheet. The balance sheet includes our assets, our liabilities, and our fund balances for the district. Each month, we like to take a look at our cash and investments, and we'll concentrate once again on the general fund. We show that we have cash on hand of $13,300, bank deposits of $141,000, investments in estate pools of $98.4 million, short-term investments, $29.7 million, and investments with TCG Investment Advisors, $51.6 million, for total cash and investments of $179.8 million. The next statement we'll look at this evening is the income statement. The income statement has our revenues and expenditures and fund balances. Our revenues are broken down into three categories. They include local and intermediate sources, state program revenues, and federal program revenues. In taking a look at our year-to-date expenditures by major category, we can see the payroll is the number one expenditure in the general fund, debt service in the debt service fund, and child nutrition, it supplies and materials, and in self-funded insurance is contracted services. This is our 2015 bond referendum status update for the month of October. A combination of our 2015 bond referendum and the funds transferred from the general fund totaled $520.2 million. Our projected forecast at the completion of the bond referendum is $514.8 million, leaving us with contingency of $5.4 million. We've currently encumbered and expended $302.7 million, and our estimate to complete the projects, we need to spend an additional $212 million. Great news to report on our self-funded insurance, we had another good month in the month of October. For the year, we've had total revenues of a little over $8 million. We've had expenses just a little over $6 million for our revenues over expenses of $1.9 million. Participation at the wellness centers has been going very well, that number keeps ticking up. We actually had 75 visits at the North County Clinic, so I see that continually getting better participation. So our investments for the month, we ended the month of October with $319.6 million of par value. Our pools were yielding 1.26%, our short-term investments 1.33%, our longer-term investments with TCG Investment Advisors 1.25%, giving our combined portfolio a wham of 71 days, yielding 1.27%. And our benchmark, which is the 90-day T-bill, was a little over 1%. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We're going to move item 9, legal, up to before executive session so that we can get all this done, and then we'll go into executive session so that anything, any of y'all need to be here for, we've handled, and then y'all can go home while we do executive session. So, item 9A, consider resolution to cast votes and cast our votes for the election of the 2018-19 Montgomery Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mrs. Gladys.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush. As you know, every other year, you guys have this item. It calls for you to pass a resolution to cast votes for the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Central Appraisal District, and then to cast your votes. You have 1,739 votes to cast. There are 13 possible candidates on your ballot. You can cast them all for one, you can divide them any way you see fit for any of the candidates on the ballot, and so I will turn it over to you to decide how. I'm assuming you'll want to-
Discuss first, and then we'll decide and vote how we want to do this, so.
President, I have a question for Mrs.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Anyway, it's Gladys, I really do know, I really do know your name is-
Yeah.
Been 10 years. Is it, like, 20 years or so?
Yeah.
Does 700 votes virtually guarantee somebody a position?
That is what we believe.
In the past have done.
Yes, in that range, that is what we've awarded.
I just wanted to establish that, you know, to make sure that I was right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam President, you're, thank you.
All right, I know that some people really want to discuss this, and kind of the discussion seems to be, I think we need to kind of go person by person and decide, are we going to vote for one, two, three? We can vote for a total of five. However, we would want to divvy that up, but then-
Exactly, I guess you could vote for more than five if you want, if you have-
We have to go in order.
I don't know that we have to go in order, but I think there was some desire to have discussion.
I'd just like for us to have the time to vote one-on-one rather than a slate.
Sure.
So that we can each talk about the candidates as we want to.
But I would also, instead of just voting for each one of the candidates, I'd like to talk about how you split those votes to make it more, most effective.
Yes.
I mean, that's what, and if you, if I may just start off.
No, please.
I'd like to suggest that we cast 700 even votes for Mr. Lucy, okay? And then I'll let everybody else go from there, chime back in or whatever, but I'd just like to start it there, please. And I mean, and the reason why is I think 700 will lock his position. I'm very impressed with what I know and hear of this gentleman, and I'll let other people who know him better than I do expound on that, but I'm-
Well, I know Mr. Lucy personally, I think he's an exceptional guy, very sound judgment. He brings a wealth of value, a very, you know, clean kind of understanding of how things should run in a manner that doesn't create chaos. He's a military, Air Force Academy grad. Like I said, my wife and I have known, he has two kids in CISD, one at McCullough, one at Powell. Just a great, well-rounded guy, level-headed, no real political or any self-serving ambition. He's just a great guy that any one of us could relate to, and I think he'd bring up, he'd represent us well on the board, so. Definitely my recommendation.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly. I think Mr. Lucy's an awesome fellow. I'd like to see a little more votes go to Mr. Lucy. I know that the MUDs are going to all vote for Mr. Hoffeiser, and that's going to total 712. And I want at least make sure that we get enough to where he makes it onto that board. So I, it's just a suggestion.
What's your number?
How many?
Well, we have, it depends on how we want to split them up, I think, you know.
I just don't think 700 votes can be outvoted, Ray. It may not be first place.
Right.
But there's no way that, that nobody has enough votes to make it happen.
Right.
Okay.
And that's my reason for choosing 700. I can't guarantee that, I don't, I don't know, you know, but like you said, all the MUDs vote there.
Right.
The county is the next biggest, and they've issued their votes already.
Right.
Which we haven't even got to in the discussion, and so to lock in either one of the county or none of them, whatever, it takes less votes for those candidates to give them the 700 margin.
Yep.
Or whatever.
Yep.
Or whatever. And I mean, if it's 712 you want, or 13, we've got the votes if that's makes you comfortable. I don't...
I'd just like it to be a little more than 712. That's all my only suggestion.
Mr. Sanders, I'm going to ask, what are you thinking?
Well, about all the candidates? I mean, my general thought on candidates are, of course, I nominated Mr. Blanton, and I would like to make sure that we apply enough votes for him to be elected to the appraisal district as well. And the only other comment that I have is I know that some of the candidates, that of all the packets we got, some of the candidates are already elected officials. And my only thought is that an employee of a taxing authority is not eligible to serve on the appraisal district board. But an elected official with that taxing authority is eligible to serve. And I just see that as a conflict of interest. They're setting tax rates, and then they're being on the board. They have to abstain anytime there's discussions about the appraisal district in their own taxing authority. And so I just see that as an appearance of a conflict of interest. It may or may not be, and I'm not trying to accuse anybody of anything, I just think there's an appearance there. And for those reasons, kind of like Dr. Mel Brown used to not vote for anybody that was alive on the school board, or school...
School namies.
I have a real problem with voting for an elected official to serve in that capacity as well.
And on that note, I'd take it a little further. I don't think that anyone who is running for an elected position of a taxing entity should be considered as well. And so that would strike one additional person, in my personal opinion, so.
Well, I happen to disagree with that opinion simply because, number one, it is not a conflict of interest. It is not against the law. And some of our most seasoned, that board operates a lot like this one. And if everybody started new this year on this board, it would be a tremendous learning curve to catch up. And I know our district's so well-run that you don't really see that. But I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to a multi-hundred-million-dollar budget. And I just, I disagree wholeheartedly that Mr. Metter, who has served and with distinction the county as well as the appraisal board for years, and it personally been notified that, from other serving board members who are not running again, that his experience is well-needed. And so I don't, I don't mean to argue with you, Ray. I just simply think his experience outweighs any conflict of interest that doesn't exist, or they would outlaw it. And it's not. So, and I'm not, and I really don't mean to argue with as much as I like his experience, but let me just say. So with that, you know, y'all said...
Is Mr. Who are the, who are the current board members?
Tom Cox.
Mike Metter.
Mike Metter.
Ed.
Ed Chance.
Bruce Tough.
Bruce Tough.
So Bruce Tough's not an elected official anymore?
Correct, not anymore.
So we could vote our votes for him to make sure that he got on there. And that would provide that experience that you were talking about.
Yes, we could. Or we could give, using your adjusted, just in discussion purposes, if we gave Mr. Lucy 715 votes, okay, that would answer one of the issues you had. That would leave 1,014. If we gave Mr. Blanton 197, give him the same 715.
Right.
I believe, if my math is right, that would be 717 votes left. I would suggest that we split those 400 to Mike Metter and 317 to Bruce Tough. And I mean, that's just, you know, that's the way, plus or minus the minor adjustments there, that's what I walked in here with in my mind. So with that said, I spoke my piece. On you?
You know?
Well, I'm okay with the 715 as well for Lucy and Blanton. I also wanted to put some towards Bruce Tough as well. I think that satisfies the, I don't have anything against Mike Metter at all. But my opinion is I'd like to make sure that we get enough for Bruce Tough to be on that board as well. So how the numbers work out, I mean...
Well, we don't have enough votes to guarantee, you know...
Not to guarantee both.
Not to guarantee both.
Right.
But we had, but we, but we have in the past...
Mike Metter and Bruce Tough, I think is what...
Oh, no, no, no.
Can't hear you.
We have, we have in the past, because we have the most votes, if you split it four ways, with the right, you know, now, this year, I will say is an exception because I don't think Mr. Lucy is going to receive any votes from anywhere else.
Okay.
I just, because of being an unknown newcomer, okay? And unknown is relatively speaking. I just, you know, he hasn't served on the board in the past. With Barry Blanton getting 500 of the county's votes, I mean, that's, that's easy to see, okay? But with the other, you know, I see, I see two new faces, and I see two old faces, and I think it makes a lot of sense. And I think both of those other candidates, by splitting those votes, will receive votes from other locales. But they don't have enough to influence. But once we cast our votes, they have the luxury of seeing our votes, just like we have the luxury of seeing others.
Well, I'm fine. I'm fine with what your suggestion is.
Well, I mean, it's just an idea.
Could we go with...
Mr. Sanders, do you mind? I want to give Mr. Moore a chance to...
I didn't have anything to do with it. I have worked very closely with Mr. Metter when I was at the Precinct One Constable's office. A fine man. But I kind of, I'm in line with Mr. Sanders on being uncomfortable with somebody who's setting a tax rate, also being on the advisory board.
So, I mean, it seems like there's at least three, four, I don't know where you stand on that, Mr. Williams, but there's, seems to be a consensus among us that we don't really want someone who's sitting on a taxing entity to be elected to the board.
I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'm not saying that. I'm just, I'm not sure that it's necessary at this point. We may have the experience we need going elsewhere. I said, I don't believe that, I don't know Mike Metter as well as some of you do. But what little I do know, he's a very upfront, honest, and good man. So I don't want to cast a thought that I believe that he would do something inappropriate.
No, I don't think any, I don't think any of us are stating that we think that, but...
I understand that. But my thought is more on the lines of, if the experience is what we like, and maybe a little gray in the hair, then, and I know Bruce wouldn't mind me saying that about him.
He probably would.
Maybe. He's not here to defend himself, so I'm going to say it. But that's my thought process.
Okay.
I, can I share one of the last?
Please.
No, I didn't have anything.
I'm going to share one last thing. I have a tremendous amount of respect, having gotten to know Mr. Tom Cox for years. And I don't, he is one of the persons that suggested experience. He didn't say names to me, okay? He did not say names to me. But I, you know, I just, because I wouldn't want to put words in his mouth. But the experience was very important on that board. And I, while I am encouraged by, I've known Mr. Blanton all my life, and I don't know Mr. Lucy, but I'm encouraged by, you know, new people who have a desire to serve and so on and so forth. I think the experience is, way outweighs the conflict or the appearance of conflict or whatever. And so I want to reiterate that. And I trust that that board and people that, like, we know how this board works, they have more experience at what actually happens and what is needed than I personally do for the appraisal board. So I wanted to interject that. And I, like I said, I have a lot of respect for both of those gentlemen, Mr. Metter. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Tough, and I have a lot of respect for Mr. Cox. And so that's why I feel that way. But I'm ready to move on and let the votes fall where they may.
I was just going to comment. I was at Commissioner's Court this morning when they actually placed the votes. And I found it very interesting that Mr. Metter was willing to not be voted on by his board. He said that if they felt like it was a conflict, since he has to abstain from votes, he was willing to not be voted on. And they went through several rounds of deciding who they ended up coming to. They don't normally, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but they don't normally pick someone other than ones that they have nominated. And they stepped out on this one and actually went for Mr. Blanton, who came from Mr. Sanders. So that was very interesting to me that they didn't nominate one of their own nominees and vote for them. So I just wanted to throw that in there for...
One other thought I had, if we were to pick 715 for Mr. Lucy and 715 for Mr. Tough, and that gives each of them 715 votes, if we gave 197 to Mr. Blanton, that gives him 715. That leaves us with 197 votes. And the county's other nominee was Mr. Casey. And if we gave our 197 votes to Mr. Casey, that would give him 716. And then we know the MUDs are going to elect Mr. Hoffeiser with 712. And so that would put them all right in the range where they barely will be elected. That's just a thought.
And I've worked with Mr. Hoffeiser before on the Alder Bridge Village Association. He's a very good man. I really liked his approach to things.
But just...
I don't know who Casey is.
I don't either. And just to be honest, I mean, we don't, Hoffeiser's going to be in there whether we vote on him or not. I mean, we don't, he has the vote. So that's always been true of the MUDs.
I think we have Casey's bio.
I don't know him and don't have anything for him or against him, but he's in, period.
Right, right.
Mr. Casey's on page two.
Page two, thank you.
So what we don't want to do, the suggestion is not to do a block vote, correct?
Well, we can do individually.
We can do whatever we want, yeah.
Sure. I know in the past, we've done a block vote. In 2015, I'm pretty sure we did a block vote.
We did.
We did.
We don't want to do that this time, then...
I didn't say, I didn't say I didn't.
I know.
I was the one that I think brought that up. And the only reason I know is that Mrs. Bush has a conflict with Mr. Blanton. She's not going to be able to vote for the helm.
Okay.
And I don't feel like it's...
Business relationship.
There's a business relationship there. And I want her to be able to vote for the others.
I'm fine if we do a block vote, and I will abstain. It's whatever we want to do.
Are we at a point where we can start making some motions?
Yes.
I'd be glad to make a motion. I move that we take our 1,739 votes and cast them 715 for Mr. Lucy, 715 for Mr. Tough.
I thought we weren't doing a block vote.
I'm fine with abstaining completely, so we...
You want to do one at a time?
I think he needs to finish his question.
Let us finish this motion.
If he gets a second.
Finish the motion. We can go forward.
Then we can amend if we need to.
Yes.
So 715 for Mr. Lucy, 715 for Mr. Tough, 197 for Mr. Blanton, and 197 for Mr. Casey.
Okay.
Okay.
You need a second before we start.
Yeah, do we have a second?
Got a second.
All right, discussion. Mr. Huber.
I would, I would rather not do the block vote personally. I'd like just to go ahead and move forward. Because I, I don't feel appropriate to vote for, to block vote. I like all these suggestions, but I don't know Bob Casey. And I would like to withhold on voting on someone that I don't know.
I'm willing to withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if I need a second.
I'd like to make a move that we approve 715 votes for Mr. Lucy and 715 for Mr. Tough. How about that?
All right. Do we have a second for those two?
How about?
How about 715 for Mr. Lucy?
Okay. Let's do one motion. We have a motion for Mr. Lucy, 715. Mr. Williams, second. Any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
All right.
I have a motion.
All right.
I'd like to move that we cast, I believe it's 197, check my math.
Yes.
Votes for Barry Blanton.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstention. All right. Next motion.
I'd like, go ahead.
I'd move we cast 715 for Mr. Tough.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for 715 for Mr. Tough. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
How many we got left?
197.
Right. Now, I mean, you know, who knows Bob Casey? Anybody?
No.
Okay, neither do I.
Who do you recommend?
Well, rather than cast votes for somebody that none of us know, I'd suggest that we break the 197 down equally to give each one of those 715 more votes. But not just cast votes for somebody just because we have them to cast.
Second. Is that a motion?
It is.
Well, we're going to have to break that down a little further.
How many is left of 197?
197.
Can we do the math again so we know exactly what's left?
Yeah.
The first motion was for how many?
715.
And second motion was for?
197.
197.
And 715 again.
1627?
It's 112.
1627.
Subtracted from 1739.
There's some mathematicians here, boy.
112 is what's left.
112.
So I suggest 25 and 3 is 28 votes apiece for the four people that we've cast votes for.
Second.
Are added to the, is that okay?
It is. I'm just trying to think how poor Linda's going to write this.
Well, I mean, we're going to have to go back and amend the motions that we just voted on.
Okay, motion to amend all of, and then we cast a new slate. New slate being, what's the numbers for each candidate?
Okay, okay. I suggest we cast 715 and 28, check my math, 3, 743.
Hold on, hold on.
He's right. Okay, 743.
197 and 28 is 5. There you go. 225 for Barry Blanton. Am I doing all right so far?
28 is not the right math on this in the first place, so let's stop.
What?
28 votes each does not get you to 112.
We understand that. We're going back into it.
Well, it's, 37 votes is actually with a third left for each person.
112 divided by 4.
By 3.
By 4.
Who's a fourth? We have Blanton, Lucy, and Tough. Who's a fourth? We have 3. Now, let's, let's pause a minute.
Yes.
Are we all in favor, and this is discussion, we are not making a motion at this moment, are we all in favor of splitting the remaining 112 votes between Lucy, Tough, and Blanton?
Yes.
Well, why don't you have someone, if somebody wants to make that motion?
Would someone like to make the motion that we split it? We can discuss how we allocate...
So moved.
I have it.
Okay, so moved. Second?
Second.
All right.
Okay, so...
Now, discussion.
What is the motion?
It's 754 votes for two of them and 700 and...
No, it's...
And 236 for the other.
So my question is, in order to pull this off, I'm not sure that we should go back and amend a motion that's already been seconded and discussed and voted on. I think the proper way to do it would be to make a motion to say the remaining votes get cast between and list out the people.
Agree, agree.
So I believe...
Oh, hold on. We have to, we have a motion on the table.
You can remove the motion.
Right. And so I, would you like to withdraw your motion to put it into...
I don't think I made it. Did I?
No.
Oh, Mr. Williams.
Okay, I withdraw my motion. I'm lost where I am on the motion front.
I'd like to move, I'd like to move, Madam President, that we
Allocate.
Cast, allocate 39 votes to the following 3 people, 39 additional votes.
That's too much. It's 37 to 2 of them and 38 to 1 of them. So we need to decide who's getting 38.
Meeny, meeny, miny, moe.
[laughing]
Okay, I think Barry's younger than the other 2, so let's give him 38. Whatever.
That's fine, 38 to...
37 for Mr. Lucy and 37 for Mr. Tough. Is that okay?
Got a second?
That's a good motion.
You got your math calculator work?
Yeah, it works.
That is correct.
It works.
Second. Mr. Williams, did I hear you second that?
I'm good with the guy. I think we're...
Okay. Mr. Williams, seconded that. Any further discussion on this?
No, I think...
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Is it left hand or right hand?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstention.
All right, let's get it. Good job.
All right.
Good job, girl.
I think that may have been the hardest job of my presidency. All right, item 9B. We have a specific motion that needs to be read on this. And this is...
This is me.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Madam President, I move that the board propose suspending the term contract employee Ronnie Holt without pay for the remainder of the 2017-2018 school year for good cause and authorize superintendent to provide Mr. Holt notice of this action.